Item on the Public Works Committee Agenda, it's, there's a, we're looking for an update on the Atwood Avenue Traffic Signal Installation.
Is there a report?
If I could, Council President?
Yes, Councilman.
I asked this administration, I've been working to find out when the exact timeframe is for the installation. I forwarded a letter from the State Traffic Commission through Senator Lancy's office. I just wanted to know if Jerry had any comments on that, if he agreed with the dates. Basically, just an update.
Yes, sir, we did receive that same letter a few days after you brought it to my attention. I guess the mail works slower here than it does at your house, but the short of the long is, I found the second paragraph, and I don't know if you have that in front of you or not, quite enlightening from the standpoint that if you recall, there were suggestions in this back and forth at one point in time that it was the city that was holding up this project. They make no reference to that in this document. As a matter of fact, they suggest what the holdup was. So, the dates haven't changed from when we last talked. It's, there's not much they can do about it. The engineering process takes its time. It's just that the engineering process got started late, through no fault of the DOT, but it got started late.
So, we're looking at spring of 2013?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Council Vice President, you all set with that? That was it? Finance Committee, Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, Council President. Finance met in, as to resolution authorizing real estate tax abatements. Entertainer motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, so it was voted out of committee, and we have a motion and a second. Look, please take the roll.
Councilman McCall?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Seigle?
Yes.
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 Next, Council President, resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements. Entertainer motion?
That was voted out, Councilman.
Motion to approve.
That was unanimously voted out.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
There's a motion and a second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next, Council President, tax interest waiver approvals as recommended by City Treasurer. I don't know if it was voted unanimously because I can't, I don't know how the councilman from Wood one voted, so I'm not going to say how it was voted out.
But it was, it was passed on to us.
It was passed out.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved, second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next, let's put out the Finance Committee Tax Interest Waiver Approvals as recommended by City Treasurer.
Excuse me, Councilman, I think we had tax interest waiver denials.
Well, on my, on my agenda, there must be a misprint.
Yeah, the end.
Am I correct?
You're correct.
It's a misprint on the agenda. Be denials, Councilman.
Be denials, yeah, and voted out. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
There's a motion approved, motion and a second to approve the denial. Is there any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next, Council President, is three dash twelve dash two ordinance authorizing city to agree to a memorandum of understanding with respect to payments in lieu of taxes to be paid to the city of Cranston by Johnson Wells University, who's voted unanimously out of the Finance Committee.
Motion to approve, second.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Councilmen San Maria.
I'll be, I'll be brief, Council President. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Evan Christianbaum and former Councilman Mario Osito for first bringing this to our attention, and obviously, the mayor and the administration along with the council worked very hard to get this done, so kudos to all. Thank you.
And there were several council people that worked on that in the prior council. It's been an ongoing thing, but thank you for recognizing Councilman Osito. Any other discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 The votes are unanimous.
Next on the agenda, Council President, is three dash twelve dash three ordinance ratifying the school committee's collective bargaining extension agreement with the National Association of Government Employees, local Rhode Island 153 custodians. This was voted out three to one, one dissenter if I remember correctly.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Councilman Donahue.
Thank you, Council President Lupino. I was the dissenting vote on approving the contract in the Finance Committee. As much as I appreciate that the administration sought to outsource janitorial services, and that was not required in the consent agenda in an effort to reduce costs, I learned in the hearing before the city council that, in fact, the city, the school department would have achieved more savings by outsourcing. And so, the school committee made the case not to outsource, to keep the janitorial services in-house and to extend the contract, but I don't think the case was strong enough. And again, as much as I appreciate the sacrifices that were being made within the contract, it appears that hundreds of thousands of dollars were being left on the table, so in good conscience, I just couldn't support the approval of the contract.
Council. Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, Council President. I'd just like to say that the custodians came to the table and gave up quite a bit to agree to this contract. Also, many of the custodians live in the city of Cranston, pay taxes to the city of Cranston. If we outsource jobs, those individuals can come from anywhere in the state. Also, many of the custodians do a very good job. I taught in Cranston Public Schools in the early 90s. They're dedicated to the buildings, they're dedicated to the students and to the administration, so we're keeping it in-house to people loyal to Cranston.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Donahue, you're correct. Councilman Donahue, you're correct. You did say that there was a slight additional savings initially, and that they underlined or highlighted initially the long-term savings was not, was not evidence that I could see, so, in what I, what I saw on the, on the numbers. Any other discussion? Councilman Stikos?
Yep, I'm going to be supporting this. I think the custodians have made very large concessions, a 15 percent pay cut, a reduction in sick pay, 20 percent of their health insurance they will now pay. And frankly, one provision that I'm not real keen on, which is the elimination of pensions for the new employees who come into the school district. And I know pensions are kind of a, a, have become a bad word in the public sector, but I think the idea of a pension is a very good one, and that is that we all, while we're living, put in money, and then those of us who survive to collect have money collecting, so that if Jim and I are in the same pension fund and I die before I'm 65, my money goes to support Jim, and I think that's a good system. A pension is a good system because it's a group of people together supporting each other, and I don't think the 401K, especially for low-wage people like the custodians, is a, is a very good retirement, doesn't provide retirement security. So, I would ask in the future that the school department consider that when, when negotiating, but I do think the custodians have made a lot of concessions in this agreement, and that, as Councilman Arquette said, these folks, they deserve to make a living, any of them, if not all of them, live in the city, and so I'll be voting for it.
Councilman Fivickio?
Thank you, Council President. I, I looked at it a different way than Councilman Stikos. The fact that there were some structural changes in the way that pensions were treated and the bringing in line the salary scales to what would be, what would be outsourced, actually, in the private sector tipped the scales for me to, to support it, even though I think we need, you know, we need as much savings as we can, but in balancing the need to keep Cranston people working and also to make some budget concessions and also pension concessions, I think that tipped the scale, so I will somewhat break ranks and, and support it, although I think that the fact that there are some structural changes makes it more appealing to me.
Councilman San Maria, do you have your hand up?
One second.
Anyone else? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passed at seven one.
I have a response next, Councilman. Last, last person, Lupino, is administration written response on charter requirements for public work director and traffic engineer are being met. Something you requested, President Lupino?
Yeah, the question was, given the fact that we don't currently have a, we have an acting city director of public works who does not hold an engineering degree, the question was whether the lack of an engineering degree or, and/or license by the public works director and the traffic engineer, we have an acting traffic engineer, exposes the city to, of potential, city of Cranston to potential legal liability. The answer given by Attorney Rossin is this: "The city of Cranston is legally liable for any and all acts and/or omissions by its employees and/or agents that breach the duty of care and rise to the level of legal negligence. The fact that a director of public works or a traffic engineer does not possess an engineering degree is not prima facie proof of negligence by a city employee and/or agent. All work by the city employee that needs to support, all work by any city employee that needs the support, direction, and oversight by an engineer would need to have it reviewed and approved by the chief engineer of the city, Nick Capezza, at this, at this point. This is within the state guidelines for municipal engineering work. It is important to note that any work that encompasses more than traffic signage and the like would most likely be state, developer, or bond finance, where an outside entity would be performing the engineering, not the city. To summarize, the city would not be held legally liable to an outside party for that simple, the simple fact that the director of public works or traffic engineer does not possess an engineering degree or license. Any and all claims and lawsuits will be based on the negligence of the agent or employee separate from their specific credentials." Chris Rossin, city solicitor. So, that's the, that's the opinion. Any, anyone have anything to say about that? And this is a few, few stop signs in, in new business this month. That should be interesting. Councilman, you all set with your report?
Yes.
Safety Services and License Committee, Council Majority Leader, Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. Committee met on Cafe Luna, 22 Midway Road, for a liquor class transfer from B to BV. This is approval over the cap. The committee has met unanimously recommends approval. I move passage.
There's a, is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilman Stikos.
Could you just explain what a B and a BV license are, what the difference is, and also, are there, is there any negative to this, or why, why do we have a cap?
Could I defer to the clerk? A B is beer and wine, and a BV is full?
That's correct.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
A B is beer and wine only. BV is full liquor license with victualling food, which is a state law requirement, that you have to have a menu.
If I may, and is there any disadvantage to going over the cap? Why do we have a, a cap?
I think I'm going to defer it. Can I defer that one to the city clerk, Maria? Is there any, there's no really, we're not held to it.
There's no advantage or disadvantage, in my opinion. Some cities and towns have no cap on their full liquor licenses. We do. Our numerical cap is 69. The council, a number of years back, rather than just increase the cap, which they could have or eliminated, they decided to create a two-step process where if someone wanted a full liquor license and it was above, above that numerical number, it went through a two-step process. It went to Safety Services for a recommendation and then for approval by the council. And we tend to hover in the, I believe this will be number 74, so we're about five above cap right now.
But the, the cap is only on the full liquor licenses?
That's correct. We also do have a cap on the limited, which is the BV, the beer and wine, but we never reached that. We've always got plenty of those available.
Any further discussion?
Thank you, Maria.
There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 I have nothing further on the agenda.
Now, we have a section for public hearings. This is open to any matters, whether they're docketed, undocketed. State your name and address when you come forward for the record. Last call? Okay, now we're under election of city officials. Are there any elections of city officials? Guess there's none. Executive Communications, report on hiring of special counsel consultants pursuant to chapter, charter section 1505. Is there a report?
You should have in your package a copy of the outside legal fees dating through 4/11 of this year, and it's, it's cumulative back through the beginning of the fiscal year. Also, on the docket this evening is Cranston Police Department Sergeant Edward J. Walsh, who's requested to be placed on the pension roll. Sergeant Walsh has met all the necessary requirements, and we encourage your approval.
Is there a motion on Edward Walsh?
Motion to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, under Council President Communications, I still have the landfill odor issue, administrative Deputy Lopez, tomorrow or the next day should be the litmus test, because 2.64 inches of rain in Cranston, is that the latest toll? I mean, that was, that was the, the basis or the blame placed the last time on the number, the amount of rain that we had. Now, it's been rather dry, but we get a pretty darn good soaking, so that should be the litmus test the next, the next few days.
You're absolutely right, Council President. We'll see what happens these next couple of days with this heavy rainfall. I do have a call-in to Mike O'Connell, and we briefly spoke, and as you know, I was away last week, so I didn't have a chance to talk to him today, but before I left, he did inform me that the work to remediate the smells and everything with the new wells and the new equipment is on, it's all set and it's working like it should. That should be part of the reason why you're not smelling it or having any more issues. Obviously, the dry weather has helped, so until we have a rain event, he really couldn't say that it's not going to happen again, or it's going to happen, so if you want to continue this until the next meeting, when we'll have had the rain event and the real litmus test on the smell, I would be happy to address it at that point again.
Okay, we will do that.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have quarterly investment report. Finance Director Strom.
Thank you, Councilman. I sent a communication, I believe on Friday, to all the council members regarding some of our investments. We currently have 20 million invested with Webster Bank. They've been the, the institution that's given us the most buck for money. We're at about .23 basis points, far cry from what it was some years ago. I went to a, they call a, Ocean State Investment Pool meeting today with the Treasurer, Raimondo, and it was interesting because the state is looking to have municipalities join them to invest money in a very liquid manner, similar to what we're doing now, to get a better rate of return. I was surprised that the state of Rhode Island has invested over, just themselves, over 400 million with fidelity investments through their fund called Paramus Global Advisors, and their rate of return right now is only 19 basis points. So, with the city of Cranston investing with a smaller local bank, we're getting a better rate of return currently, and that really surprised me because I don't see what the incentive is for us to invest with the state if their rate of return is less than what we can manage. So, that may be only temporary, so I will be doing more research and I'll be, I'm on the, with the group, I should say, that's with the state of Rhode Island for this investment. It just gives us, in my opinion, another option, but if the rate of return isn't as good as what we're currently getting, I will not be pursuing it. I'll be staying with our local institutions, which are all collateralized.
Well, I guess the question remains then, is, is the investment pool a casual option, or once you commit to it, you have to join it?
No, it's, it's, it's not something you have to join. It just gives you another option, like another bank would give you an option to invest. So, you, you can invest in it, but it's not mandatory either.
And they don't even, they don't even require a minimal amount to stay, to stay into it?
Not at all.
You can do it at any time?
Not at all.
Okay, and certainly it'd be another option for, for us to look at, to see how we're fearing.
Yeah, I mean, after tax collection in a particular quarter, I always have my treasurer look to see what banks and what the rates are. This will be another option in addition to that, and we'll obviously go with which is the most favorable for the city of Cranston.
I guess that it just begs the question the other way, though. If the, if we were getting a better rate than the state, why weren't they coming to our bank?
Well, because through the fidelity investments, there's a fee that they charge, so really, technically, they were getting a rate of, say, 31.31, as opposed to our 2.3, but there's a fee of .12. So, that brings it down to 19 net, so that's the difference.
And ours is the net?
Yes, it is.
It's a net fee against net fee?
Yes.
Council Vice President.
Mr. Strom, just so, you know, the public and can understand when you talk basis points and stuff, can you just give us an example as far as when, as far as like a ratio, like 20, if we, if it's 20 million with 19 basis points, what does that mean on a quarterly return? Like, like a dollar amount? You know, if you can talk, I mean, we're talking higher rates here and here, but realistically, what is the, the, what is pretty much, is it 10 million? Can you give us like a breakdown of what we're talking about as far as the investment return of point, point, or 19 basis points?
Yeah, I mean, basis points, 100 basis points would be 1 percent, so .23 would be 23 basis points, or .23 percent of 1 percent. So, I mean, to do the calculation, you know, on 10 million.
Please, just, just so people don't think that, you know, we're making all this more, or vice versa, I mean, I'd like to know like what a million dollars means in point 19, you know, 19 basis points, actual dollar figures.
Yeah, that's probably $1,900.
Not a million.
Not a million, yes. So, what I'm saying is that this year, we projected 100,000 in our budget fiscal year 12, but we have since lowered it to 50,000 for fiscal year 13. We'll probably end up between 40 and 50,000 for fiscal year 12, and it's been decreasing for the last five, six years. At one time, we were making hundreds of thousands of dollars, and now we're, you know, with the, with the interest rates as low as they are, we're making very little.
Okay, yes, thank you.
And just so we don't give the wrong impression to the scouts, it's still important to save your money, no matter what the interest rate is. Put your money aside. Pay yourself first. Use that piggy bank. Okay, we have council member communications. First, Majority Leader Santa Maria.
I thank you, Council President. The Walmart issue has been evolving, and as of last week, there was a, a few trucks were towed out of, out of the lot, and a couple of the other trucks just left, so it seems to be working. I did, however, Carlos, get a call from one of the neighbors that Dollar Store last week had a 4:00 AM dumpster emptying party at 4:00 AM. They were told last year not to do that, and it seems like they're back to their four o'clock visits, so could, I've already talked to the property owner, he said he was going to call them, but I was wondering if you could follow up with a phone call?
Sure, we'll definitely follow up with a phone call. Like I said, I was away last week, and I did get your email, and I will follow up on it this week, and as the Walmart issue is concerned, I think it's been satisfactorily addressed.
I think we're calling it phase, phase three seems to be working, so.
Right.
Councilwoman Luciano's been up there, myself and Council President Lupino, we've seen trucks, but not as many, so.
Right, no, I think that they're done, they're doing a great job trying to address it, and I think it's a good example of the council, the administration, and everyone involved working together towards a common goal in getting a good positive result, so I think everyone did a good job.
Okay, so could you, we'll keep this on the agenda for next month, just as a follow-up, and you could check on Dollar Store.
I just, I just had a question.
Okay.
The Dollar Tree store has a license, is that correct, to do business there?
I believe so, yes.
And you don't feel that this is a necessary show cause to come to Safety Services to show why they're, they're blatantly ignoring the, the action, or?
I would have no problem with a show cause hearing, because this has happened once before. So, can you give them a call tomorrow?
I think, Council President, if we can hold off on that, with all due respect, it could be, it's something that happened for a variety of reasons, a substitute driver, someone filling in, someone who didn't know. If, if you don't mind, I'd like to have an opportunity to reach out to the store directly and let them know what the situation is, and if, to make sure that they're aware that even if they do have a substitute driver, that do have a substitute driver, that that person needs to be aware that they cannot do these things. So if, with all due respect, if we could ask for a continuance to next time, I would appreciate that opportunity.
I'll oblige you on that, but with all due respect, substitute driver gets dispatched by the company.
I understand.
The company must be aware, so...
I understand.
Substitute driver or not, unless he just wasn't listening.
No, I understand where you're coming from, but given the situation that it's only happened once in over a year, and the fact that we've had great success working with the management company, I think if we could give them the benefit of the doubt this one time. Otherwise, if it does happen again, I'll be the first one to join you in that call for a special show cause hearing for them.
Okay, so this is their last warning. If it happens again, they'll be in for show cause?
Absolutely.
Through the President.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you for your consideration, President.
You got a legal bill?
Yeah, through the Council President, to Evan Kirschenbaum. You're going to get me an update on litigation. They had flood damage from the 2010 floods. Is that correct?
I think we're talking about the Independence Way...
Independence Way, yes.
The Independence Way case is, we're actually caught in the middle of the suit. This is a lawsuit between a homeowner and the apartments or condos at Independence Way. The basis of the case is that we were third-party defendants brought in by the defendant Independence Way. And what they're claiming is that a particular basin, which is located on their property, at the city, performed routine maintenance on that basin. And they're saying that if Independence Way is at fault for the flooding, then we are too, because we somehow negligently maintained that basin. That's the basis of the case. I don't particularly think it's a strong suit against us. The bills for the case, the case being handled by Jim Deambra, who's an experienced defense trial lawyer at Rice Dolan and Kershaw. And looking at his bills, I don't think there's anything objectionable or unreasonable about them.
No. I just, actually, I just questioned if it had anything to do with Walmart, and you're saying it doesn't.
No, no. It has to do with the maintenance or non-maintenance of a particular basin between this particular homeowner and Independence Way.
Okay, yeah, I don't need this on the docket next month, Council President.
Just so the council understands, this is something that went before the Claims Committee and was denied, and that's why it's in court.
Yeah, some years ago. We were brought in, I believe, I think this has to do with the flooding of even 2005. We were brought in, once the case was developed, someone at DEM made a comment concerning this basin, which may have indicated the city of Cranston did or didn't do something. So the Independence Way seeking another pocket went after Cranston. But I had a conference this week with Deambra, and he's seeking to get us out of that case.
Okay. Council President, could I add one more request?
Sure.
While I have the floor.
Sure, I'll head.
Through the, to the administration.
Travis Larsbrud.
I had asked during Public Works if we could get a paving list for this season. So I asked Jerry if he had had that meeting, and if we had an idea what streets we're getting paved this year.
Yes, we did have that meeting, Councilman. We don't have the list completed yet, and as soon as we do, we'll share it with you.
Okay, but that's, put this on next month's agenda? Thank you.
Councilman Stychos, Petuxa River.
I had asked about the status of removing two dumpsters that are in the river.
Thank you, Council President. We did get out there and identified the owner of it. It's allied waste of Fall River. We reached out to them on numerous occasions without a response. So we tried having the solicitor reach out to them to see if that would help with the response, but still, we didn't get one. So what we're doing now is, we have reached out to the Petuxa River Authority to make sure it's okay for us to go in there and remove those dumpsters. And if it's okay with them, we will be yanking it out under direction of the solicitor and leveraging the catch, if you will. Those dumpsters are worth about $450, so we're going to see if we can't scrap it.
Great, thank you. Mr. Council President...
I'm sorry, excuse me.
I just...
I'm sorry, Councilman.
An announcement that on May 1st at 7:30 at Parkview, I'm holding a meeting that will have the, about the environmental conditions at the Sebagaiji property on Mill Street, and have arranged for the key person at EPA and the key person at DEM to attend the meeting along with the environmental person from the new owner of the property, which is BASF. So that's a public meeting, and it was, it's actually a second meeting that I've held on the property. And at the first meeting, which was to inform the neighborhood about the new owners of the property, people had a lot of environmental questions which I couldn't answer. So that's why we're having the second meeting with the people who should know the answers. But basically, what's happening there is this large German chemical company BASF has purchased Sebagaiji in the U.S. And as part of that is the property in Cranston, and they're looking to assess the environmental conditions of the property, remediate it, and then develop it, is what they told me.
Excuse me, someone's having a conversation back there, and it's, you know, we can't hear, the stenographer has a tough enough time hearing in this situation for the record. So please, take your conversations outside, please. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Councilman.
That's, thank you. So there are no specific development plans, but that will impart the dependent on the environmental reports, because it's, you know, there's one environmental standard if you're going to build a residential home, there's another environmental standard if you're going to build a, say, a factory. So anyway, that, I just wanted to let everybody on the council know that that is on May 1st, Parkview Middle School at 7:30. And the other item, the last item, I just wanted to ask the solicitor for a report on the Ward 4 seat. What is happening with that, or Mr. Quinlan? I don't, I know that there was a hearing on Friday.
Yes, last week, we went to the Supreme Court after the trial court denied to remove, or refused to remove her injunction preventing Ward 4 council member Bucci from sitting. So we went up to the Supreme Court. Supreme Court said, well, you're going to be in front of the Board of Elections on Thursday, you're going to be in front of Judge Taft Carter on Friday. Come see us on Monday morning and tell us what happened. So we went to the Board of Elections. They heard and overruled the Board of Canvassers and ruled that Mr. Pelletier was legally domiciled and entitled to vote and hold, and remain a member of the city councils, the wording they used, until February 7th, when he resigned. Now, appeal of that is by what's called a writ of certiorari. It's a, you asked the court if they would take the question. I don't know if anyone's appealing it yet. I think perhaps Mr. Sakosha, the complainant, may appeal that to the Supreme Court. So we went back in front of Judge Taft Carter and asked her to remove the, on Friday, to remove the restraining order that prevents Councilwoman Bucci from, you know, participating in meetings. The court refused it, but they asked us to brief the issue. The issue is whether or not state election law primarily and totally occupies the area of candidate qualifications. And if that's the case, the charter provisions would be subsidiary to that, the ipso facto on the residence word. So we're all briefing that. Our briefer due tomorrow afternoon by close of business, and she has promised a ruling by Friday or Monday. I did let the Supreme Court know this morning, Justice Indelia, that there is an issue with budget amendments, and if, in the event of a veto or an amendment that the mayor vetoes, the override question could become significant, and he said he would keep that in mind as they, we're not sure when he's going to take it to conference. We're up there in a writ of certiorari, which is asking the upper court to remove Judge Taft Carter's injunction that prevents Councilwoman Bucci from participating in discussing things or even voting in council meetings. The court hasn't accepted that yet. They assigned us the duty judge. He happened to be there the afternoon we went up. So he hasn't really made any rulings other than to say, let's watch and see what Judge Taft Carter does, maybe that will resolve everything. So we have, the Board of Elections appears to have indicated that, you know, council member Pelletier remained a legal resident, a legal domiciliary, entitled to vote, and they used the word "and" member of the city council until February 7th. So that June 22nd date is still in a band. So I think the court's aware of the pressing nature of these matters, both the Supreme Court and the Superior Court, and, you know, we're on a pretty fast track to get a decision. But they are also aware that we might be bumping up against a hard deadline with approval of the budget and financial package and any amendments and vetoes. So we told the courts on that, and I think we would ask them to have a ruling before that occurred, or perhaps even delay that if necessary, to allow a full vote of a full council, if we're pretty close to a resolution anyway. I hope that more than answered the question.
Councilwoman Luciano.
I would just like to know if there's a transcript available from the last hearing.
At the Superior Court, there is a transcript that can be purchased. We did not purchase a transcript, because it's a, we're going to be back up in the Supreme Court anyway. I mean, both courts are monitoring what's going on, so...
Great.
They're really, so what the court said was that, essentially what I repeated here, that wants a briefing on this issue. So I don't believe she's taking arguments, she just wants two memoranda, or memos from everybody submitted tomorrow, and she promised to get a decision.
I'm only concerned about the transcript.
Oh, okay. We have the transcript, I think, from the April 3rd hearing. We need that. I might actually have that with me.
Oh, perhaps you could email it to me and make a copy.
We didn't get one from the second hearing. Pardon me?
Perhaps you could email that to me or make a photocopy.
Sure, I think I might actually have, I'll relook, I might have a copy with me.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Council Vice President?
I just want to clarify, the transcript of the court, or was there a transcript for the Board of Elections hearing?
No, I don't believe there was a transcript yet. I mean, that's a different hearing.
There was a, there was a stenographer there.
There was, for the Board of Elections?
Yes, there was.
Because I would like the transcript for the Board of Elections hearing.
Okay, I think the court will be careful.
I'm referring to the court.
Madam Clerk, if I can request the transcripts to the...
Is cost to consideration, or is it just to be ordered?
Well, I think there is, you know, under our council eye line items, yeah. Because I think we should have an update, or have the transcripts available to us so that we can also be updated on what the testimony was at that hearing.
That's the transcript from the elections hearing last Thursday.
Good night, scouts. Council Vice President, did you have anything else besides your initial question that you were going to drop on the...
I just, for the record, I had the Wendy's. I just wanted to make sure that, just confirm that the city did respond to the complaint, because I mean, from last time we were here, there was a complaint filed against the city, and I just wanted to just, I don't want to need to know the details of what's going on the litigation, but I just want to know that we perfected and filed the complaint, that, I should say, responded to the complaint.
That is the case.
Councilman Fivickia.
Thank you, Council President. Just a point of clarification, I just would like to inquire as to what we might find to be the cost of these transcripts, because I don't think they're expensive, I didn't know.
My thought, my thought on that topic is, although I'm not involved in this case, my thought on that topic is that if it goes to the Supreme Court, the appellant or the person seeking certiorari would necessarily have to order the transcripts from the lower court to bring it to the Supreme Court. So perhaps if you wait a couple of days, you can get them for free with the filing of the person seeking review from the Supreme Court.
But what about the cost, though? You mentioned the cost.
If someone files it in the Supreme Court, anyone is free to go to the court and copy it. So I'm sure Pat, or whoever's representing people at that point, will go up and get a copy of the brief or the papers filed by the moving party, and the transcript should be attached with the filing to the Supreme Court. Whoever files a petition has a burden of ordering it from the lower court.
I think to be clear, with regard to the hearing before Judge Taft Carter that you were asking about, that would be our burden, supply that transcript to the Supreme Court anyway.
I can buy my own transcript, I just want a copy of it, that's all. That's very simple.
Right, but I'm saying, the one from the Board of Elections is different, and we have to see if someone's going to appeal that.
I'm interested in the Superior Court and the Supreme Court only.
Any other council member communications? There being none, all business, or is there any all business?
I have none.
Introduction of new business, is there any new business?
We have several new ordinances going in. We have a total of eight. They all pertain to traffic, they're all an amendment of Title 10, and I'm not going to recite the title in whole just to save us some time. Proposed ordinance 4-12, these are all to be referred to Safety Services for hearing on May 7th. Proposed ordinance 4-12-1, amending Title 10, adding a multi-way stop intersection to Sheffield Road and Wrangley Road. Proposed ordinance 4-12-2, adding a three-way stop sign to Sheffield Road and Merrill Road. Proposed ordinance 4-12-3, stop intersections enumerated by adding Hobson Avenue at its intersection with Douglas Street. Proposed ordinance 4-12-4, adding a three-way stop sign to Burnside and Douglas Street. Proposed ordinance 4-12-5, adding a four-way, multi-way stop to Brimfield Road and Amherst Road. Proposed ordinance 4-12-6, stop intersections enumerated by adding Sprague Avenue at its intersection with Douglas Street. Proposed ordinance 4-12-7, adding no parking between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, Calaman Road in front of premises numbered 11 Calaman Road. Proposed ordinance 4-12-8, no parking on certain streets generally by adding Calaman Road in front of premises numbered 11 Calaman Road. We also have a resolution. This is asking the General Assembly to pass legislation authorizing a bond to be placed on the referendum pertaining to parks and recreation. This, at the request of administration, will be referred to a special finance committee hearing the night that we'll be doing the amendments, which will be May 2nd. We also have a resolution supporting Governor Chaffee's municipal reform legislation to be referred to the Finance Committee for hearing on May 17th. We also have one new late piece of business that was not in your packet, sent out on Friday. You have a copy of an email from Solicitor Kirschenbaum. It's a request from Broad Rock Renewables LLC to tie into our sewer system. Since this is late, we'll need a motion to accept it and refer it to Public Works for hearing on May 7th, 2012.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion second, any discussion? There being none, Clute, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Is that all?
That's all the new business I have.
Just a quick miscellaneous on the report from the Police Department. Item number one, I'm sorry.
I just, I just want to correct...
I just, I just want a correction on the introduction of new business on, we had dash 04, dash 12, dash 7. I guess it could be corrected in committee, but basically, it's deleting, deleting the 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, so that we clean up the, the old ordinance and adding no parking, which is 4-12-8. So, we're not, it's already 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. That's already, that's already an existing ordinance. But I was, I wanted, I wanted that deleted and added no parking. So, we have one right one, except this, this one should be to delete or have an, across, cross through. Make it.
Proposed ordinance 4-12-7, we're deleting that no parking from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Saturday.
Correct.
In front of 11 Calaman, and we're adding no parking generally of certain streets, eliminating the time restriction in front of the same premises.
I just wanted to give the, the other ordinance to get it off the books, so you don't have two conflicting ordinances. Thanks.
I just wanted to note on the communication from Colonel Palumbo, item number one, on March 24th, Colonel Marco Palumbo and members of the Cranston Police Accreditation Unit appeared before a board of CALEA commissioners, who voted unanimously to award the Cranston Police Department with national advanced accredited status. This national recognition and status is something that less than 7% of all law enforcement agencies in the nation are able to achieve. Just thought that was important to note. One quick question for Councilman, yes. They've been rather modest about the designation, but I mean, 7% of the nation, that's a, that's a pretty, pretty big deal. Councilman Stykos, did you receive the communication between myself and Solicitor Rossin regarding the Cranston tree liability and the sidewalk legal opinion? Have you received either of those?
Yes.
Okay, just for consideration when you're deliberating in claims. And we have miscellaneous business on the clerk's desk.
The first item is a resolution passed at the April meeting, and attached in your packets, as required by the code, the mayor sent a response dated May 4th, and that's there for your review. This resolution will also be on for a quarterly review, as was requested in the resolution. The follow-up resolution 2011-3 urging the mayor to look into feasibility. This is a follow-up report. It did initially get a favorable response from administration, and it's, it's a late six-month follow-up.
And we had the conservation easement, is that so?
We, well, administration would report on 211-3.
Oh, okay.
Council President? Thank you. In regards to the resolution 2011-3, I researched this last fall. The property in question is owned by the Durfee family. So, Mr. Paul Durfee was nice enough to give me a few minutes, and I did go speak to him. He explained to me that this issue has come up in the past, this idea. And at that time, the family did hire an attorney and receive an opinion from that attorney that they felt, the attorney felt there was too much, there was a liability exposure, that he didn't think the family should, should consider the idea due to liability. So, like I said, I mean, he was nice enough to give me a few minutes. I did go in person and speak to him, and, and so I just wanted to make sure the, that I, I did put this on the record, because it is private property. So, I felt as though I did due diligence for the city. I wanted to investigate it, but unfortunately, you know, with, with the opinion from their attorney and the liability involved, they are, they are not interested in that idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair, for the record, I'm going to remove this from any further follow-up.
Re- I can just.
I'll remove this from any further follow-up.
Councilman Stykos, you were the sponsor. Do you want to do any more follow-up on this?
Councilman Navarro and I jointly sponsored it. I think we're ready to pull the plug on it.
It was a dead issue a while back, so I don't.
Yeah, because of the, because of the private, the private lien. No, we tried anyway. So, no, there won't be no further action on that.
The next item is the conservation easement, that the council's been waiting for the executed copy. I don't know if administration wants to report on that. It has been recorded in my department.
Yes, that contract has been executed. Why you have not received the executed copy yet, I'll find out for you.
Through the chair, we, we do have the executed copy, and it has been recorded. That was just the follow-up from previous month. It's been executed and recorded in land records.
Any other further business, there being none? The city council's next regular monthly meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 29th, due to the holiday. So, it's Tuesday, May 29th at 7:00 PM. Motion to adjourn? Folks, can I adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn. Thank you.